Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve any council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor and Council, I have one addition, one correction for the agenda. The addition you can probably number at fifteen point five, and it's a lease agreement for consideration by the council. And then I would just note that item nineteen, the fee schedule, there is an updated schedule that's on your desk tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve that agenda with those corrections.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, uh, implication, Oak Heights Covenant Church. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Thank you. As an active member of the Hutchinson Acumenical Minister Association, I do want to express today our thanks to the city of Hutchinson for the openness and support of the various expressions of faith represented here in our community, and for this opportunity to offer a prayer. We at Oak Heights Covenant Church uphold the city, the city leaders and staff in our regular prayers. I'm grateful for this evening to offer this prayer tonight. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, every perfect gift comes from you, and in this season, I thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus Christ. This evening, I pray for your gifts of wisdom, unity, and peace to be poured out upon our city council members. May they graciously hear each of the items that is before them today and make clear decisions that will continue to assist this community in its growth. May Hutchinson continue to be a city where families make their homes, where children can learn and play and grow in safety, where people at whatever stage of life find comfort and compassion, and where people together thrive. At this time of year, I lift up and pray for the families or persons experiencing that empty chair of a loved one for the first time. May we be a community that protects and uplifts the vulnerable and the brokenhearted. Sustained Lord, sustaining Lord, may your presence be felt through the loving actions of others and as they show care. May our actions lift heavy hearts. Now, Lord God bless each council member as they carry out their work. I pray for Mary, for Dave, for Pat, for Chad, and for our Mayor, Mayor Gary. May they have a sense of satisfaction in the work that is accomplished here tonight. In your gracious name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognization of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight?
I just wanted to thank those wonderful workers that have decorated our city and made it so beautiful. So thanks to all our Parks and Rec people, the utilities, anybody who's out there decorating and making it beautiful. You drive through town, and it's Christmas in Hutchinson. So, thank you.
Yep, don't have to go too far. There's a lot of houses that are decorated this year.
Oh, all around town.
Yeah. All right, we do have a proclamation. Whereas on November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, Michael Cannon refereed the college football game between the University of Minnesota and the University of Wisconsin in Madison, Wisconsin. And whereas this was Michael's last Big Ten football game as a college football official. And whereas Michael has spent the last forty-two years as an official at various different levels, spending the last twenty-three season officiating in the Big Ten. And whereas Michael has the opportunity to be an official in the two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty-one Big Ten championship games. And whereas Michael also had the opportunity to officiate in the two thousand five, two thousand ten, and two thousand eighteen bowl championship series, college football playoff, national championship games. And whereas locally, Michael has been a fixture within the community, serving on various boards, committees, and commissions, including the Hutchinson Downtown Association and the Hutchinson Economic Development Authority. Now therefore, I, Gary Forseer, Mayor of the city of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim the week of December twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two as Mike Cannon Week. In the city of Hutchinson, Minnesota, in recognition of Michael's contribution to college football as an official, and Michael's service on various boards, committees, commissions throughout the city of Hutchinson.
I can stand up in front of a hundred thousand booing fans, millions of people watching the game, and it doesn't bother me at all, but to stand here makes me really nervous. No, I, well, this is pretty cool. Thank you. Thanks to all of you. And I'm not done serving Hutchinson, so you'll have to put up with it. That's why, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
As Mike asked to leave because he has to go to a meeting.
We do have a resolution underneath there, uh, resolution number one, five, five, two, five, resolution accepting one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from the Hutchinson Lions Club for improvements to Lyons Park.
I think they want to present the check.
Yeah.
I am in Miami, Cook. I am the president of our Hutchinson Lions, our head John D. Tellon. And we are presenting our check to you guys.
While she presents the check, I'd like to extend a tremendous thanks to the citizens of Hutchinson and our surrounding communities. Uh, this year was a banner year for the Hutchinson Lions and our mini golden trailer. Uh, we did great business throughout the fair and Polchesci Days and all around the neighborhood. And, uh, it's come to light that our trailer needs a little bit more love. Uh, it's thirty years old, and if anybody wants to help us out with that, we greatly appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And we also have resolution number one, five, five, two, six, resolution accepting one thousand three hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents donation from the Today Women of Hutchinson to the Hutchinson Fire Department for Fireman's Park Project. Make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll send them that. I want to that. And there are good reports.
Oh, you're doing both resolutions?
No. You already did the Lions one. Right? No, they didn't?
They didn't do the Lions.
They didn't do it? Oh, yeah. Kevin, yeah. Sorry, you'll be doing more.
All right, thank you. Mary, you seconded it, correct?
Yes, I did.
All right. Motion by Chad, second by Mary to accept both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward and state your name and address. All righty, uh, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, the summary of city administrator performance review of December sixth, two thousand twenty-two, truth and taxation hearing minutes of December sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A, boards, commissions, and, uh, appointments. Uh, we have appointment of Eric Jensen to Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to August of two thousand twenty-five, appointment of, uh, Facilla Roche to the Senior Advisory Board to January of two thousand twenty-six, and reappointment of Matt Chaney to the Hutchinson Utility Commission to December two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, B is approval of issuing a massage license from Chantelli Halls at nine oh three Highway fifteen South. Uh, C is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the lobbying Barber Pro Ray Company on December twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, D is approval of application to conduct off-site gambling for the Hutchinson Hockey Association Incorporated on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three at Crow River Golf Club. E is approval of two thousand twenty-three license renewals. F is approval of the city assessment agreement with McCloud County for two thousand twenty-three services. G is, uh, approval of MPCA stormwater grant. D is approval of resolution number one, five, five, two, four, resolution establishing traffic control device. There's no parking on Robert Road Southwest to Allen Street Southwest to Dale Street Southwest. I is claims appropriation contract payments, register A. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right, we can skip down to.
Yeah, Mayor, we've got twenty minutes, so I would, maybe I said you go down to the communications requests and petitions.
All right. Uh, update from Riverside Committee.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Valerie Mocketune, and on behalf of Riverside Music Festival, we are here tonight to thank you for your support for the last twelve festivals. We've come a long way since our first event in two thousand nine. And as we move forward, we are asking for your continued support for our festival this year, July fourteenth and fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We have already contracted with Parks and Rec for the weekend. Um, our talent team is in the process of securing our amazing performers, so stay tuned for that announcement that's coming this spring. Um, for those of you not aware, Riverside and the city of Hutchinson have always enjoyed a partnership in the past. Um, and we have been very grateful for this because over the last twelve years, we have been able to make many improvements, including building the new stage in two thousand eleven with the partnership with the city. Um, we've made electrical upgrades to the board southwest of the pavilion. We've done an electrical panel built on the stage. We've fabricated a line for hanging the backdrop. Um, and right now, we are in the process of working with the city, S E H, and B W Welding to design and fabricate hanging system for lighting on stage. So all of these installations, while they benefit Riverside Music Festival, they're also assets that the community is able to enjoy, and we have paid for those all out of pocket. So Riverside's portion of the stage cost, which was agreed upon to be an open-ended payment, was thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, we have paid eighteen thousand dollars of that back. In addition to what we have paid the city, all of those other expenses that I just listed have been paid out of our pocket, which total almost fifteen thousand dollars, which we've done through generous sponsors, fundraisers, and from our community supporting our festival. So today, we would like to present you with a check for four thousand dollars, um, to have paid twenty-two thousand with a remaining balance of thirteen thousand, which we feel very confident with the continued support of our amazing festival and community, we will be able to pay that off. Um, we just wanted to talk again about how we've willingly contributed to the enhancements in the Sonic West River Park, because we feel that it greatly improves the festival, but it also gives the community and the city an improved park to rent and for all to enjoy. I just had a personal experience this summer. I was walking kind of on Harmony, and I, I heard music kind of coming through, and it was like an amen, and the sun came out, and there was this beautiful Christian music festival. I had no idea was even going on in Hutchinson, and it was just wonderful to hear across the river and hear the whole community getting to enjoy other concerts. I also heard kind of a death metal thing one night, but you know, each their own. So, in closing, we want to then thank you and our community for the support that they give, not only to Riverside Festival, but to the arts in general. I feel that it greatly enhances our community, and it just makes me want to live here and raise a family here. Um, so we'll be back in the spring with our request for our two thousand twenty-three liquor permit, because we definitely need that for the festival. So in the meantime, we hope you'll enjoy our upcoming mini pop-up concerts, which are going to be featured at Arts Place, um, January, February, and March. And put Riverside number thirteen on your calendars for July fourteenth and fifteenth. So.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
There you go.
Do we need, uh?
No, um, I'll have to talk with Andy, because it's a longstanding agreement, and if anything, we would just put together a resolution for our next council meeting. So I'll have to go back and look to see what our arrangement said. So it might already be factored in. If anything, I'll have it on the next council meeting.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Review of truth and taxation hearing.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time, but usually what we at least try to do is after we've had our truth and taxation hearing, which was last Tuesday, is at least bring it back up to the council. To see if there is a desire to have any additional discussions from, from that hearing. And so really, that's the, the purpose of this was that we really have, we had, I think, one comment at the hearing. Not sure if you've received any other feedback since that meeting, but I wanted to at least provide an opportunity for any discussion items as Andy and Justin and I work on kind of putting the final touches on the budget for next year to see if there is anything that we needed to, um, bring to the council for your last meeting of the year, which that budget and levy will be adopted at. And then I did have just one update. Um, I wasn't able to update, I wasn't able to share the most recent information at a truth and taxation hearing, but within the last week, the two thousand twenty-two data from other cities came out. Um, and so we use it as a kind of a comparison. And so I wanted to be able to. Well, that doesn't look like the envelope, so.
It's Melissa.
I have a headless secretary.
Oh, maybe. Put your headphones on.
I'm like, I've never seen that before when I've done this. So, excuse me. Um, so
one of the things that we've always tried to do is take a look at what our tax rates are looking like, and, um, compared to, uh, the other real estate regional centers we compare ourselves to. There's eighteen other ones that are identified, um, in the state. And then we also take a look at what the, what their tax rate is, um, from a statewide average. And so those, the two thousand twenty-two numbers that recently came out within the last couple of days, um, at last week's hearing, I had twenty-twenty-one numbers. Um, and just a couple of things to highlight. Um, if you recall, we were, uh, in regards to the outstate regional centers, we were fifteenth in twenty-twenty-one, and we moved up to, I guess, eleventh, if you want to say, in regards to, um, the city. This is the municipal, our tax rate. Um, and I've highlighted what the state average, actually, the regional center average and the state average actually went up. I had thought that they were going to go down based off of what we've seen, but they, they got up about a, I think, a half a percent to, uh, to one percent. And so the age-old question of our, is city of Hutchinson's taxes too high? Um, I've always said it's dependent on what you're comparing it to. Um, we shared at the meeting that we have the second lowest tax rate in the county. Um, this is on the municipal side. This is where we, where we stand in regards to our regional centers. And as I highlighted, the state average, um, for city, for city taxes is seventy-four point six five percent. Our twenty-twenty-two tax rate is sixty point four one. The proposed budget that we've put for the tax levy for next year is actually going to lower that to fifty-three point four nine percent. And so I wanted to kind of at least share this updated information since that, that recently did come out. So. With that being said, was there any additional comments, thoughts, anything that we need to be looking at in regards to repairing the twenty-twenty-three levy and, and budget?
I think it's encouraging to see the direction we're going, because it is something that everybody always brings up, the concern of high taxes and going the right direction.
Well, like I said, there's no, no action items. It's just I had it on there for discussion.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Review of proposed utility service repair policy. Mr. Olson?
I think you're going to get tired of me up here tonight, so please bear with me.
That pad you're stepping on, that's actually a shocker.
Okay, good. It's probably a good thing.
Uh, Mayor and Council, included in tonight's packet is a proposed policy to address water and sewer service repairs. In two thousand ten, uh, the city, since two thousand ten, we've had a policy to help customers with water service repairs. The city is also recently enrolled in the League of Cities Sanitary Sewer Backup Incentive Program, which covers some damages that may occur as a result of a sanitary sewer backup. The city code identifies that the entire water service from the house to the water main is the property owner's responsibility. The city would retain rights to, uh, address repairs at the property owner's expense if necessary, whenever a leaking water service could result in property damage, or if the leak would prevent, uh, presented a life, health, safety hazard. In Minnesota, more than half of the cities treat water services the same way we do in our city code. There are quite a few, however, that cover, uh, the city would cover from the water main up to the curb stop or the service valve for a larger property. The, our city code also identifies that the entire sanitary sewer service from the sewer main to the building is the property owner's responsibility. And again, we would, um, be able to make repairs if there were, uh, potential property damage or life safe, health, safety hazards. Uh, our city code is in line with virtually every other city code in Minnesota. In two thousand ten, the city adopted a policy that compromised between the two models typically used. And the policy exceeds requirements of the city code, and a fee of fifty cents per month was charged to water customers, and that, uh, is used to fund this service. For more than ten years, this revenue has been used to assist property owners with the first four thousand dollars of repair costs for their water surfaces between the water main and the curb stop. Under the policy, property owners remain fully responsible for any repairs between the curb stop and the, and the house. In recent years, the cost of repairing water services has climbed. In the past, it was common for us to more than cover, um, the cost of a repair with, at that four thousand dollar level, uh, including restoration of pavements. Um, in recent years, however, it's no longer, uh, unusual for those repairs to exceed four thousand dollars. There's been no change to our waste, uh, for sewer service repairs, and under this code, it continues to be, uh, the property owner's responsibility to make those repairs. So earlier this year, public work staff evaluated some options regarding water and wastewater service repairs, including, um, one option would be to revert back to the city code provisions, where property owners would be entirely, entirely responsible for both water and sewer service repairs. We could leave the program as it is. We would still cover the first four thousand dollars of water service repairs between the main and the curb stop. We could leave the program as it is and increase the amount of coverage, or we could expand the program to include both water and sewer services, and even increase coverage to cover to within a reasonable distance from the building, um, provided there was an agreement between the city and the property owner. So, uh, options we considered also included, um, private insurance. Um, some homeowners' insurance companies have programs available to cover, uh, and ensure against necessary repairs to water sewer, sewer service lines. And there's a handful of private companies that also specialize in this type of insurance. The National League of Cities has a cooperative, a, a program with HomeServe USA. Under the program, cities can serve as a conduit for Home Serve USA to reach out to property owners to solicit, uh, um, coverage for the, for their sewer and water services. And, uh, as part of the city's cooperation, Home Serve, uh, offers that coverage at a discount when compared to their typical rates. I know in the past, we've had, um, solicitations just generally made to the community and have had questions about those, um, also. One city in southern Minnesota, uh, recently implemented this type of coverage, and the cost to the property owners was five fifty a month. And that would cover, uh, maximum of eight thousand five hundred dollars per either the water service or the sewer service as an event. So, um, it would cover eighty-five hundred dollars per event. So if we took that amount, that five fifty, and we applied it to Hutchinson, that would generate about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, if we divide that by the eighty-five hundred dollars of maximum coverage, that's thirty-nine repair events a year. And as public work staff, we believe we can offer the same level of coverage at two dollars a month. Um, with, and that would be more in line with the amount of service repairs that we act, that we typically encounter in a given year. So if we do a two-dollar premium, I would generate a hundred twenty-two thousand, about fourteen repairs. More, again, more in line with what we typically experience. So the public work staff is recommending that you consider a self-insurance program. Uh, again, the cost would be one dollar each for water and sewer, total of two dollars a month. It would cover eight thousand five hundred dollars of costs to repair water and sewer services, to include work between the main and up to a reasonable distance from the building foundation wall. Uh, it, all work that would be done on private property would have to be done under a separate agreement, and that no work would be done inside, um, inside of the building under this program. So after taking a look at the several options to enhance the service provided, um, again, we, we recommend that you consider this self-funded program. Um, the one dollar a month for the water side would generate about a little over sixty thousand dollars, enough to cover about seven repairs, which is pretty typical in a given year. And again, on the sewer side, again, that dollar would generate the sixty-one thousand, again, about seven repairs. Um, and more in line with what we would expect. So, um, if we were to add the two dollars a month to the utility bills, we could, with the cooperation of the property owner, cover up to eight thousand five hundred dollars of the cost to repair or replace a water or a sewer service. And the information that we provided in the packet outlined the details and, uh, kind of a pro forma of the agreement that we would have with the property owners in order to do work on their, on their property. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about it, or, um.
So John, right now, we charge fifty cents a month, correct?
Correct.
So you, we'd be looking to go from fifty cents to two dollars.
Correct. Yeah. And a dollar each in the water and the sewer. Correct, yeah, and a dollar each in the water and sewer side.
And then, council, you may recall, we did have a resident that came and addressed the council earlier in the year about, you know, recently having gone through this and realizing that the city's fee no longer covers the cost. I think that was kind of the, the prelude to this policy. I guess, at least for your knowledge, we don't have a policy on the agenda for approval tonight, but that fee change is included in the fee schedule. And so, trying to be a little bit proactive on that, assuming that there's a desire to look at doing this. We'd still have to approve the updated policy at our, at our next council meeting, but we have included those, those fees in that fee schedule you're considering later on in the meeting.
So John, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Reasonable distance from the house is like close up to the foundation of the house, right?
Right, yeah.
If the homeowner was to do all of this work by themselves, excluding the four thousand dollars that the city already puts towards it, let the public know how much it really costs than the average.
It's, it's very hard to give you, I can give you a very, a range.
Okay.
It would be probably three to nine thousand would be a typical. However, if you add in, if you're, if you go underneath the concrete driveway, for example, or underneath, you know, some other structure, that, that cost can go up dramatically. So, in the case of the gentleman who we, that was in here earlier this year, his service actually was underneath the driveway. So the, the, the cost to actually repair the pipe is only a part of, of what ends up going into that. Most of the cost on that one happened to be in the restoration of the concrete driveway.
So in my opinion, when I look at this, two dollars a month is, is a good value for what, what could happen? A lot of the homes in Hutchinson, and they're older.
Right.
The pipes were put in, when, the thirties, the forties, twenties?
A lot of them in the seventies, and, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think it, you know, the, I think we're mostly, we're all homeowners here. Nobody enjoys getting that surprise, all of a sudden, your water line, you know, the city pays for the cost of the main, but that service line, all of a sudden, is failing, you need to replace it, and oh, by the way, it's gonna cost you five or six thousand dollars. I think twelve years ago, that's where they came up with that four thousand.
Right.
You know, and for years, that, that was more than enough to cover that cost. I think in the last two to three years, we've seen those three to four thousand dollar costs are now that five to six.
Five, six, and, and more, dramatically more if there's a lot of restoration of pavement. So, I, I think the other thing that, that it's important to note is with the program that we have already, that the customers obviously like it because they're helped with the cost of that repair. The contractors like it because they work directly for the city. We write the check to the city, or we write the check to the, to the contractor, so they like that too. As a public works staff, we like it because now we can control the restoration that happens so that it's a quality restoration, and we know that it's gonna last. So, I think, you know, it's a win-win-win, and this would just expand that. And, you know, when, when you looked at what kind of rates they were gonna be charging, you know, they gotta make a living too, you know, they gotta buy groceries and shoes for their kids, but I think we can do it much less costly than that five fifty amount, so.
That's where I'm in favor of.
Good value for your dollars.
For that policy.
Totally.
The additional dollar fifty you're gaining, I mean, you're getting quite a bit of value for it.
Exactly, yeah. And, and that would be a per event issue, you know, that would be, your water service would be one event, your sanitary sewer service would be another event, yeah.
Here it is, just after six, so you can, I'll ask you to go up to the public hearing portion.
So that's all you need from us, John?
Yeah, we'll have a policy in front of you for consideration, that's your next meeting, or the policy update. And just a note too, the, the fees have been included in the fee schedule. If you approve the fee schedule, yes, you are getting a little bit ahead of yourself, but it saves one less step in the future. You can always, if the policy does not go forward, we would then obviously remove that from the fee schedule, so.
All right, we do have public hearing items for the two thousand and twenty-three pavement improvement project, letting number two, project number twenty-two dash oh-two, twenty-three dash oh-two, twenty-two dash oh-three.
Lots of dashes in there.
Yeah.
It's hard to keep track of all these numbers. This is the hearing on improvement for the two thousand and twenty-three pavement improvements project. This project is intended to perform a mill and overlay in order to maintain the pavement on two high-traffic roadways and to complete construction of a trail along Highway fifteen south. The roadways will be maintained between the curb lines by milling off a portion of the paved surface and overlaying new bituminous pavement. The current sidewalk along Highway fifteen south will be replaced with a ten-foot trail starting where the existing trail is at Grove Street and will travel east and north to Linden Avenue. Initial work on these projects began in two thousand and twenty, and for the last several years, the two roadways have been on, identified as candidates for mill and overlay. The trail along Highway fifteen south was designed along with the Highway fifteen improvements that were done in two thousand and twenty. And so far, we've had a few steps in the process for this project. We've introduced the project, prepared a feasibility report for the project. On November seventeenth, we conducted a neighborhood meeting for the project, and that leads us to tonight's hearing on improvement. The project will consist of mill and overlay along the whole length of School Road northwest from Golf Course Road northwest up to North High Drive, and along the whole length of Century Avenue southwest from Dale Street southwest, east to Boston Street. There will be some minor repairs of curb and gutter at specific locations along these routes. Pedestrian ramps for the Highway fifteen trail were constructed along with Mendat's improvements in two thousand and twenty. This project will be to remove the concrete sidewalk that exists now and basically fill in the gaps with a new trail from Grove Street up to Linden. So the Century Avenue Southwest overlay would begin at the intersection at Dale Street and proceed east, past Blue Jay Drive. Access during construction would be limited during actual milling and paving operations, otherwise, everything should be accessible. There may be some small work zones established to make other minor repairs along the route. And the project continues east past Black Hawk Drive and Oaks and the Pines, continues east past the new apartment buildings on the north and the fairgrounds on the south, to the intersection of Sunset Street southwest and the Fairgrounds entrance. Then it would continue east past the townhomes, past Market Street, and end at the intersection of Boston Street and the entrance to the mall parking lot, and would extend all the way up to where Century Avenue is concrete pavement to the east of this. The overlay project for School Road will begin at Golf Course Road and proceed around the corner toward the north. And again, during the milling and paving operations, the traffic would likely be detoured onto Golf Course Road. The overlay continues north and up to the, and past the intersection with Twelfth Avenue, and continues up to the intersection with North High Drive, or County Road twelve. For the Highway fifteen south trail, that would begin at Grove Street, and that's where there already is ten-foot trail to the south and west of this. And this would proceed east and north, and continue to Franklin Street, and then go north and up around the curve to Linden Avenue. Project construction of the three projects is estimated at about five hundred thirty-nine thousand, with engineering and consulting costs of around a hundred thirteen thousand. And these two roadways are des, both designated as municipal state aid streets, so they are eligible for state funding. The trail is also avail, is eligible for state funding, and we anticipate using three hundred seventy-two thousand dollars of state aid funds to offset a majority of the city's costs to maintain these roadways and to construct a trail. This will leave the city's municipal state aid balance at just over two point one million following this project and the other projects that we have scheduled for two thousand and twenty-three. And the assessments were calculated using the assessment, city's assessment policy and rate structure, and the assessments are estimated to be about thirty-two percent of the project. The areas in blue will not be assessed, this is Century Avenue. On the far left-hand side west is Dale Street, and going east, you're at the Fairgrounds entrance and the intersection with Sunset. The blue areas will not be assessed, those are rear yard, or those properties have sufficient credits to eliminate the assessments. The yellow highlighted areas have proposed assessments. And then the east part of Century Avenue project, again, the yellow proposed assessments for those properties. The fixed cost assessment method was used to determine assessments for the two large parcels on School Road. On the west, it was laid out that it would be feasible to put in six standard, hundred, sixty-six by a hundred thirty-two lots. That's the lot size that's referenced in the special assessment policy, and is based on the older part of town, the central part of the city, where that's a typical lot size. So, that would, that's the determination that was made for this particular property. And again, fixed cost is one of the methods that's outlined in our special assessments policy. Likewise, on the east side, it would be feasible to have ten standard, single-family lots abutting School Road. As you can see, we avoided areas of wet areas, wetland areas. I don't really wanna call them wetlands because that creates problems, but soggy spots, how's that? So we avoid that, and we avoid, obviously, property lines of other properties to, to establish how many would fit in there. At the north end of the property, there are a couple of lots that have proposed assessments. And in, in both cases, they'll have a corner credit. And the two lots that actually abut the Thirteenth Avenue cul-de-sac in the past special assessments that we've done for these properties, that portion of their lot that abuts School Road has been considered their rear yard lot line. So, they would not have any. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about this project, and we do have Justin Black here, he's the interim city engineer. Well, he's with SEH, and he's, he's also here to, to answer any questions about the project. And that concludes mine on, on, on the, on the school, School Road, the Century Avenue, and the Highway fifteen trail.
Mayor Council, we do need to go into a public hearing. Once again, this is the, the public hearing portion, or the public's opportunity to provide comment and feedback to the, to the city council regarding the proposed projects that are in front of you for consideration tonight. And so with that, I'd ask the mayor to, to open up the public hearing.
We'll open it up for public comment, just come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mark Bullard, address nine five one Golf Course Road. So John, it might be helpful to put up the one slide.
Sure. This one, yeah.
So, my wife Laura and I own that property, it's been in the family for fifty-five years. And at this point, we don't have any access to School Road from this particular property. All of our access is off of Golf Course Road, which is to the left and to the west. So, at this point, we would like to respectfully request that this assessment be removed from our property.
Any questions from the council on our situation?
The house, the house is located down here, and the primary entrance to the house is here, off of Golf Course Road.
We also have one more driveway off of Golf Course Road, just a little bit to the north, approximately thirty feet north of the other driveway. And then, back in the day, there was also, very close to the southeast or the southwest corner of the upper wetlands area there, like, up with the nine is a nine five one, that's where another driveway was originally located. That has, since the curb and gutter went in, that is being replaced now, so that driveway is, is not used anymore. But yes, our house is on the lower corner right there.
And Mark and I have been communicating back and forth relative to this, and there's a, there's a pretty big file that I've been able to go back even into the nineteen eighties, so it probably would be best if I could put a report together that would be shared.
And I would just, as a point of clarification, we're not considering assessments today.
Right, correct.
Obviously, assessments are a part of the project if the council decides to move forward with it. There is a second hearing that takes place regarding assessments. I think Mr. Bullard is obviously making this interest known in front of the council right now. But just for a point of clarification, we're not dealing with assessments at this hearing tonight.
So John, do we have any past precedents set for, you know, like the lots that are like this, I mean, it's for your property?
Yeah, and, and that's really why we took this first shot across the bow was that we wanted to treat those both according to the fixed cost method. I can tell you that there are some, there's some history with this particular property. Again, it goes back even before the, the property was in the city moments, you know? It goes back that far. And so, I think it would be worth our while to review all of those and make sure we're, we're understanding where, where everybody's coming from, and what the past history on that has, has been, so.
So that would be the assessment on five lots that we might weigh off. And you're just on the side of the.
Right, right, on the, at this point, the calculation is, the way the method is laid out is that you can include assessable units based on an equivalent number of lots that could be created on any particular parcel. Yeah, but I think they're, again, relative to this particular property.
Right now, it's just one parcel, correct?
Correct, the entire parcel is one parcel, yes.
And we're basically with the sixty-six forty-five.
Yes.
So a fixed method takes into account what we presume will be future development.
Right, because obviously you can't, you know, you're not gonna build unless you build a household. Because a fair, a fair amount of that is, is pretty wide, so.
So down in the middle of town, there's more normal lots. So down in the middle of town, there's more normal lots. Like what happens if you have a double lot? What does the assessment look like?
Typically, you'll get the entire length, yes. And I think this method is in there to account for odd situations similar to this.
We'll wait for you.
Great, thanks, Mark.
Anyone else? Just come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Arthur Castle. I live at ten eighty-five Dale Street. And I am one of a number of homeowners of the La Gracia community. And just a couple minor concerns there. Although the city had done some preliminary work on curb and gutter. And that work has given a number of the drivers from our community some problems as their front end of their vehicle bottoms off as they hit Dale Street there. Although that wasn't a concern before, but with the new overlay. And I hope that can be addressed before the or during the construction there.
Yes, yeah, that's one of the areas. It's this driveway that's right here.
Yes.
Correct, right, yeah.
And if you hit that, at a straight, straightaway, a number of vehicles, the front end of the vehicle is scraping the front of the, what is it, airflow diverter on some of the vehicles.
Sure, sure.
John, is that one of the, we talked about there's some.
Some minor repairs there, right.
For curb and gutter, is that one of the areas?
Yes.
And that's something that the city does before the.
Yes, that'll just be part of the repair. And those concrete repairs will be completed before, you know, pavement, paving takes place.
And kind of an overlap problem there that the community is also considering some work on their, on our driveway.
Okay.
So have the bids been let out to?
No.
Okay, so that, so we don't know who would be doing the street work as such.
Not yet, sir.
Okay, but we have a bid from, I think it's the bargain company that would do our driveway and some repairs to our parking lot.
Okay, sure. I'd be happy to share that with you if the, as the time comes. But we wouldn't expect to hear, know that till probably early February? Early February, maybe mid-February.
So what would the timeline be for the overlay project?
If I recall correctly, we, this project could start, at least the trail part could start before school was out. But the overlay itself on Century can be, has to be completed before school starts. And it cannot be done during the period of, obviously, when the fair is on. That'd be crazy, so.
Okay, the answers all, Michael?
Okay, yeah, so feel free to reach out to me. And as we get a little closer this, you know, mid-February, we'll know who we're, who we're going to be dealing with. Maybe there's some opportunity there you might want to ask him about, so.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, yeah.
Anyone else?
Mayor, we want a public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have two resolutions underneath there. Resolution number one-five-five-two-zero, ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specifications. And resolution number one-five-five-two-one, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids.
Yeah, I think it'd be just for the public's knowledge so they have an understanding of the process here. Tonight's consideration is obviously to move forward with bidding out the project. Once, you know, the council acts tonight, then we would bid out. And once we receive the bids, we then follow up with an assessment hearing at that time. So you're probably looking with February, March for the assessment.
Correct.
Just to kind of give yourself, Mr. Bull, a little bit of understanding of, you know, we'd be able to do some, get some additional information around the council regarding concerns that were raised tonight regarding the assessment. And that's our general standard for any one of our construction projects.
That's correct. Do you retain a motion for those two resolutions?
Motion to approve the resolution one-five-five-two-two and one-five-five-two-one.
Nope, you're at the number eight. Sorry, God.
One up.
I will up one. Resolution number one-five-five-two-zero and one-five-five-two-one. I was paying attention.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Any items for alley improvements, letting number three, project number twenty-three dash oh-three? And twenty-three oh-four.
Very good. Again, this is the hearing on improvement for the two thousand twenty-three Alley Improvements Project. This project really intends to complete improvements, partial improvements that exist in two commercial alleys that serve commercial and institutional properties. The project would be to construct paved alleys, a paved alley surface and install storm sewer improvements for alley number twelve. We call that, at the shop anyway, Taco John's Alley. So Taco John's is on the west end of that alley. And Casper's chiropractic center is on the east end. And then alley number fifty-five, the Hutchinson Fire Station's on the south end of that. And Fairway Independent Mortgage Company is on the north end of that alley. Again, this initial work began a couple of years ago. For some time, we've identified these alleys in particular as candidates for completing construction. Again, as I talked to you before, the portions of these alleys are already paved. The Alley Improvement Project would complete the paving of these two alleys. And so far, again, we've gone through some steps in the process. We've introduced the project, the feasibility report. We had a neighborhood meeting on November seventeenth. And that leads us to tonight's hearing on improvement. The two alleys are identified again are at least partially paved already. And we would complete construction in these two alleys while improving stormwater drainage for both. The current configuration of alley twelve is skewed toward the north on the east end of the alley. So if you were to draw a center line down where the actual alley center line is, for the most part, as you go east, it would veer off to the north. So this project would, that straighten out the alley and place new aprons at the streets. And then match into the existing paving behind the businesses that are there. Alley fifty-five is also paved at the south end, up towards the north end of the fire station. This project would be to install curb and gutter, install storm sewer drainage inlets, and then pave the alley with petunias. And this project is designed to be compatible with future development of a parking lot north of the fire station on the property that the city recently purchased. Total construction for the alleys is expected to be about a hundred seventeen thousand for alley number twelve. Use the here around seventy thousand for alley fifty-five. And engineering and consulting costs are expected to be just over thirty-nine thousand for those. The geo-improvement bonds are expected to cover about sixty-nine percent of the project funding with assessments estimated at twenty-one percent. Stormwater utility would pick up approximately ten percent of the project. On alley twelve, there are five properties abutting the alley that would be assessed at a current rate. Our current rate for alleys is fifty dollars a foot. There are also five properties on alley fifty-five. One of those, the one shown in blue, is city property where a future parking lot will be developed. And the remaining properties are assessed on their footage at the current rate of fifty dollars. So, thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the proposed improvement project.
John, that one by the fire station, are you going to remove the curb that's in the back of the station now?
This, the initial, the very early design that we have for the, for the parking lot shows that, yes, we would remove that. And the actual parking lot would be moved closer to the building as part of the project. And then also, there would be like a sidewalk that would go across the north side of the fire station to get you to that northwest entrance. But yes, this existing curb line right along the south boundary would go away.
And there's an electrical box right where the arrow was.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that's right. That's that little black dot right there.
Any questions for John?
One of the things I do want to point out on this is that we're drafting easement documents in order to serve the two properties that abut, or that face Second Avenue near the Fairway. And also helping out Chapman's, Edward Jones, Pat Chapman's. We, we put together easement documents that would take care of putting an easement across the north side of that future parking lot to make sure we can access to those buildings for their electrical and gas and other services. With the project, there is a gas service located at the southeast corner of this building, roughly in this area, that will have to be taken care of as part of the project. We'll lower it to make sure it works with the construction that we have.
All right.
Mayor Council, obviously, similar to the public hearing just went through, the same procedure for this one as well.
All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Just come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Ian McDonald, and Fairway is my work address. John, I just want to make a request. Could you use your pointer to go where the white box has its black line, right to the south behind my building there?
Yes.
That's a low area.
Okay.
And all of the water from Edward Jones, all of the water from the backside of my roof, and even my parking lot in the back, I had to put in a sump pump situation out there. And I wanted to request that when the sewer and drainage system is being put in, that I could participate in that so that we can just solve all of the water that gets in there.
I'd be happy to make that happen.
I think we talked about that right away.
Yeah.
Once we started.
Yeah.
And one other question, thank you. Along the alley, do you envision a curb or?
On one side, at least.
On one side?
Yes, typical, in this case, I believe we have it on the west side.
So it would be on my side of the alley?
Yes.
And what kind of, what's the protocol for curb? Is it a standard, you know, raised curb?
It would be more like a valley curb.
You could drive across?
Yeah, drive across, yes.
That's all for me, thanks.
Great, thanks, Ian.
I think that's kind of like the one that's Jefferson.
Correct.
And so Ian, if you want to see what it's looked like, it's down on Jefferson, right? We, mini mine?
Yeah, for Pro Auto. And so it'd be that half block west of Adams Street, south of Fifth Avenue. It would look very similar to that. Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, opposed.
Motion by Mary, second by Pat to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have two resolutions underneath there. Resolution number one-five-five-two-two, ordering improvements of in preparations of plans and specifications. And resolution number one-five-five-two-three, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids. Now, now what's this time?
We'll wait for the resolution one-five-five-two-two. And resolution one-five-five-two-three.
Thank you.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. You don't get to go too far tonight, do you, John?
I told you, you should get overtime for this.
Yeah, yeah. Big review of the proposed water and sewer utility rates.
Over the last few years, the Public Works and the Finance Department staff have worked with S E H to complete a rate study. And it was late in two thousand twenty-one when the study was completed and was presented to the city council. And the decision at that time was to hold off on implementing the rate changes until two thousand twenty-three. During that time, information about the rate changes had been made available to various customer groups. The utility billing inserts have been the most effective means of sharing the information with customers. So hard copy inserts were mailed to customers. And for those with paperless billing, we included electronic documents. Multi-family residential property owners were notified also by direct mailing. And they were also invited to attend an informational meeting on March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two that was specific to multi-family properties. Hutchinson's significant industrial users consist of three M Resinetics, Upanor, Minnesota Specialty Yeast, and Mitkey. The city meets with these industries at least twice annually. In the first quarter, we meet typically to review the previous year and the upcoming year's sampling program. And a second meeting later in the year to conduct a pre-treatment audit. These meetings over the last year and a half have included discussions about the proposed rate changes. And we prepared mock billings using the new rates and provided that to the industries based on their typical water and wastewater consumption. The document provided before and after examples of the new rate schedule. The Finance Department put together also on the web, city's website, a calculator that you could use some of the information from your current bill, enter that, and it would tell you what the new bill would look like. We received several phone calls from people with questions. And John fielded many of those calls, and I appreciate his help with that. And many of the calls were related to the proposed irrigation rate structure that we'll talk about in a little bit here. So for more than a decade, our wastewater and water rates have remained stable. And this was possible in part because of the half-cent sales tax being dedicated to paying off water and wastewater treatment, plant improvement debts. The city identified three major areas of focus for the study. First, First, we wanted to understand the impact that various options would have on different customer groups. The second thing we wanted to focus on is, we wanted to make sure that there were, future revenues are adequate, particularly after two thousand twenty-six, when the half-cent sales tax sunsets. And finally, we wanted to make sure that any rate would account for long-term financial stability. So we took a look at capital needs at the water and wastewater treatment facilities for a twenty-year period to account for future costs. Doing a capital improvement plan twenty years out is shooting in the dark a little bit. I'm not going to blow smoke, but it does help to at least identify the scope of the issue going forward relative to future needed improvements. So we had a couple of goals. The first goal that we identified was promote water conservation. We wanted to incentivize water conservation, mainly because when we reduce demand on existing infrastructure, the result is a renewed, a reduced need to add capacity by adding additional infrastructure. The other thing is that conservation rates are required by state statute.
John, when did that go into effect? Because we technically have been.
Oh, that's.
For.
I want to say twenty-ten, yeah. So it's been almost, yeah, twelve years. So. The other goal that we had was to establish fair and equitable rates. And we determined that the fixed cost should in general be covered by base charges, while commodity charges should cover the variable expenses related to water and wastewater. If there are specific treatment needs that industrial or commercial users have, we also took a look at those rates. And these are based on the kinds of wastewater that these customers discharge into the system. And we wanted to make sure that those costs were borne by them specifically and not incurred by the rest of the people. It's important to note that, again, our goals were to spread those fixed costs and variable costs into logical categories that were fair and equitable to the different customer groups that we have. The rate study was evaluated to ensure that there will be adequate revenue to serve Hutchinson's customers for years to come. We want to effectively operate and maintain the water and wastewater treatment plants and the related systems in a financially stable manner. The half-cent sales tax sunsets in two thousand twenty-six, as I mentioned. So because of this, part of the study, we had to prepare for that time and make sure that our water and wastewater funds were remaining fiscally healthy. This rate study accounted for ongoing fixed and variable costs, the cost of debt service, and the cost of anticipated capital improvements. And in order to keep those funds healthy, we built in sufficient fund balances that were to be maintained for these different, these two. So we asked S E H to use conservative growth assumptions. The growth rate was set at point three-seven percent per year growth for residential customers with no growth in commercial and industrial customers. And to ensure, again, adequate funding over the long term, we took a look at capital needs for a twenty-year period. Throughout this study, a number of rate structures were considered, including retaining the existing structure. But after reviewing the impact of various rate structures on the long-term health of the water and wastewater funds, the rate structure that was chosen was based on a residential equivalent unit, which is a way to fairly and equitably distribute fixed costs among different customer groups. Using the historical records, we were able to determine that a typical single-family residential dwelling uses an average of four thousand gallons per month. For multifamily residential dwellings, that use averages two thousand six hundred dollars per month, or sixty-five percent of a typical single-family home. Therefore, the single-family residences would be charged a one residential equivalent unit, whereas multi-family dwellings would be charged at point six-five R U per unit. For commercial and industrial customers, the best measure for base charge is the meter size. And while customers may use less water than the total capacity of their meters allow, the charges are based on meter size because the city must have, be able to provide adequate capacity, assuming maximum use of those meters, regardless of what actually gets used. So the rate schedule that we refer to is put together by the American Waterworks Association, and it's an equivalent water meter equivalent table. And that determines the size, basically the capacity, additional water capacity. So it's, you can see that it's not, a two inches is not twice as much as an eight inch, it's quite a bit more than that. Water commodity charges for residential customers will be on an increasing block conservation rates. Again, these type of rates are required by the state. The intent of this structure is, again, to encourage water conservation, to ensure that we have maximum capacity in our systems. And we put zero to six thousand gallon per month rate at the lowest. I mentioned earlier that the typical single-family residence uses four thousand gallons. So the vast majority of single-family residences will be using less than six thousand gallons a month. And the rate step-up begins after the first six thousand and then a final rate increase at the twelve thousand or more gallons per month rate. So they're calculated, the first six thousand is at one rate, the next six at another rate, and anything over the twelve thousand at the third rate. A lot of time was spent on irrigation. And irrigation water is considered nonessential water use. Most users of irrigation are residential customers. But we also recognize that irrigation water does not get treated in the sanitary sewer system. So the rate structure established an irrigation meter program. So customers will have the option of installing an irrigation meter. If a customer does not install an irrigation meter, all water use will also be used to charge for sewer use.
John, how's that different than what we do right now?
Today, the system that we have in place takes a look at consumption in January and February and averages that and uses that as your base for sewer consumption the rest of the year. This system would go on actual water use instead. If a customer did install an irrigation meter, there would be no wastewater-based charges or commodity charges for that water during the irrigation system, season. And we place that season at May one to September thirtieth. People with, using irrigation meters would pay the highest water rate and be charged a twenty-five dollar per year administrative fee for that service. For water commodity charges, for commercial and industrial, they will be at a flat rate, and it will be equivalent to the lowest rate that a residential customer has used. And this is the most equitable structure because it does not penalize those businesses that have to use large amounts of water as part of their business. Wastewater commodity rates are proposed to be one flat rate for all customer classes. In the case of industries generating wastewater with specific treatment requirements, those rates were updated to reflect treating that unique loading. So the base rates for water and wastewater are set at nine dollars for water, ten dollars for wastewater. If you look at a single-family unit, and for multifamily per unit, would be five dollars eighty-five cents and six fifty, obviously sixty percent, sixty-five percent of that. The commercial base rates would be the same as the residential, and they would be adjusted by the meter size. Commodity rates actually go down. The residential water rates are set at three dollars, three seventy-five and four dollars sixty-nine cents per thousand. The irrigation water at four point six, at four, four dollars sixty-nine cents a thousand. And then commercial and industrial water rates at three dollars. And then basically, the wastewater commodity rates are, stay exactly the same as they are So what does it mean, all this? Base charges increased, commodities charges for water decreased. So a typical single-family resident customer is not going to see much of a change in the amount that they pay. In this case, it goes down a whole lot in twelve cents or something. So it's going to be pretty much even. For a typical multifamily customer using twelve thousand gallons a month, each dwelling in that unit would be charged a point six-five R U. And so the base charge in this case would go up. Again, the water commodity charge goes down, but you can see the impact there of the additional base charges based on the number of units instead of one unit like it is today. And for a typical commercial industrial user with a four-inch meter, again, because of the meter, the base charges, that would go up. The water commodity charges would go down. And you can see the impact of those billing changes. The rate, the rate structure for commercial industrial incentivizes the customer to right-size their meter to match their operations. If a commercial industrial customer is able to limit their meter size, their base charges are lower. If smaller meters are installed, there's additional capacity in the city system created by that. That would delay future expensive capital improvements needed to provide that water at a higher, with a larger meter. So that's the benefit of it, and we want to incentivize that. So the overall goal of the effort was not necessarily to raise revenue, but rather to focus on creating a fair, equitable method of charging for water and wastewater services. And with a particular concern about maintaining it into the future, particularly as two thousand twenty-six rolls around. And while base rates increased, the water commodity rates decreased, and some customers will have a lower bill than they currently have. Others will see an increase, primarily due to the base charges changing. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Council, I asked John to kind of go over this tonight because obviously later tonight is, for consideration, is the fee schedule. So, you know, I think this is probably the third or fourth time we've talked about it at the council level. And I mean, we initially started our conversation in two thousand twenty-one, and I want at least, and I have at least one more review before we're asking the council to officially approve these rates for two thousand twenty-three. We put that fee schedule on tonight in case there was, I guess, some thought of wanting to look at it a little bit longer, give us an opportunity to then bring it back at the next meeting.
I'm going to sit down and be quiet.
All right. Thanks, John. We have no unfinished business under new business. Purchase agreement with Janus Ranout for one thirty-five Glen Street Southwest.
Now I was going to spend some time talking with you guys.
Very little time. My second most, my second most famous line, right? After Company X. Okay, I'm just going to give a quick overview on the same information that really applies to items fourteen, fifteen, fifteen point five, sixteen, and seventeen. So we should be able to brush through these hopefully pretty quick. So just a quick overview. Years ago, it's been a long road. Years ago, we had applied to the Federal Emergency Management Administration, FEMA, to hopefully get a grant to remove some properties from the hundred-year floodplain of the Crow River. And so the three properties that were identified are in that yellow box. And it took a long time to get to grant approval, but finally FEMA did approve the grant. We were authorized six hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars for the project. It was a grant that would cover seventy-five percent of the acquisition and demolition of those houses. And then locally, we would have to come up with twenty-five percent to cover the local match. So two hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred eleven on our end. So we've been talking with property owners in that area for years, literally, and now we're finally to the point where we're ready to move ahead with the project. So we have a signed purchase agreement from Janus Ranout. That would be this here middle property right here. And then we also have a signed purchase agreement from Rodney and Leanne Olson, which is right next to the river. So those were appraised at two hundred forty-six thousand for the Ranout property and three hundred thirty thousand for the Olson property. These will become city property. We have to keep them as city property forever because of the federal funding. But then our plan, once we acquire them, a couple months down the road here, as soon as they've been vacated, we would probably demolish the buildings. If any of them can be salvaged and reused, we'll explore that as an option. The garages might be reusable. So we'll see. We'll just play that by ear as we go along. So. So I think tonight, really what we're asking for, we have two purchase agreements ready to go. And then we're asking the city council to pass resolutions authorizing relocation benefits specifically for Janus Ranout and Rodney and Leanne Olson. And that is really, it's mandated by Minnesota state law, but I wanted to get a resolution to kind of reaffirm that because FEMA gave me another document that said they're not paying relocation benefits. So the federal government's not, but we're mandated by the state on our side to do it. So I just wanted to really affirm that for the property owners that, yes, we're going to pay you guys. And then the last item to consider would be just a lease agreement with Janus Ranout because we're going to purchase her house, we'll lease it back to her for a month, a couple months, maybe three months, because she's got to get her new place ready to go. So we're just going to lease it back for a nominal amount until her new place is remodeled and she's ready to go. So I think that's all I'm going to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Relocation, Miles is just moving.
Well, there's, there's, nothing's ever as easy as, yeah, nothing's ever as easy as you want it to be. Relocation benefits, it does cover moving, but then it also costs any, it covers any cost over and above, how can I explain it? It covers costs, whatever it costs to get into the new property that's over and above the appraised amount for your existing property, there's a, we hired a relocation specialist to help us navigate this because it's super complicated. So it's moving and then whatever it takes to get them into a like and similar property from what they're selling to what they're moving into. So if they need to make improvements to kind of bring the new one up a little bit, we have to cover that to some degree. So it's complicated. When, yeah, and we're, yeah, we're, we're just on the hook. It's Minnesota statute, they say your opinion, so.
Mary, so let's do the first one. Purchase agreement with Janus Ranout for one thirty-five Glen Street Southwest.
Motion to approve it?
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right, resolution number one five five three eight, resolution to pay relocation benefits as required by law. That's the Ranout property.
Motion to approve it?
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. All right, then we have consideration for property lease with Janus Ranout for one thirty-five Glen Street.
Motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right, we have purchase agreement with Rodney and Leanne Olson for one forty-five Glen Street Northwest.
Motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have resolution number one five five three nine, resolution to pay relocation benefits as required by law. That's the Olson property.
Motion to approve it? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right, moving on. Updated safety clothing and PPE policy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So it's been a while since we last reviewed this policy. I believe it was May two thousand and nineteen, which is over three years ago. And it's good to look at these policies every so often, just so we can make necessary updates. But in the case of this safety clothing, clothing and, and PPE policy, there's, there's a component to it that reimburses employees for safety boots and safety glasses. So as you know, with everything going on with inflation, you hear it everywhere. We in fact came to you earlier this year to review the clothing allowance policy because of the impact inflation was having, so we increased that clothing allowance amount. The policy tonight cleans up a little bit of the, of the policy language, but in essence, we're, we're, we're increasing those maximum reimbursement amounts for employee boots and safety glasses. And for boots, we're increasing it from a hundred and seventy-five dollars to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that's a maximum amount. Obviously, employees can buy boots cheaper than that, but that's the maximum amount we pay. Winter boots would increase from a hundred and twenty-five dollars to a hundred and seventy-five dollar maximum. And then on the safety eyeglasses, we would have a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is an increase of twenty-five dollars per pair. And then I believe for part-time employees, those safety glasses would increase from fifty dollars to sixty-five dollars. So some increases there. I, I think it's, you know, as we're seeing with everything, I think it's warranted. Some of the language we did clean up to, to kind of also make it more clear at what point employees can, can purchase their new pairs. But other than that, that's kind of the, the smaller portion of this policy. The larger portion of the policy deals with, with the personal protective equipment that the department's purchased. That, that's the majority of what they wear and that's purchased by the department budget. So this component we're looking at, at you to approve tonight is what the employees would be reimbursed essentially. Happy to be, answer any questions you might have?
No, they definitely need that, so.
Motion to approve the updated safety clothing and PPE policy.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Resolution number one five five one nine, adopting the two thousand and twenty-three City of Hutchinson fee schedule.
Mayor Council, generally, we bring forward this resolution to you at your last council meeting of the year, but I think with a lot of the changes, or at least proposed changes that we have in front of you, we want to at least bring it to you at this meeting in case there was any desire to, to, I guess, look for some additional information or, or to ask some questions if we need to bring it in and back, it would give us a little bit of time. I don't think a lot of these changes are, are going to be new or surprising to you. I know we've shared the preliminary fee schedule to you back in October. I didn't have any feedback from the council at that time. But I think obviously the big thing that, that's included in this is the utility rate structure change that we talked about tonight. And then a lot of the other staff recommended changes, including, you know, fees increases in park and rec. It's also got, raised some changes to our assessment policy. As we know, it's been, I think, twelve years since we last looked at those rates as well. And with, you know, recent, with our recent inability to, to meet that twenty percent bonding threshold or for assessments, we looked at changing those rates for two thousand and twenty-three as well. So we've noted the changes and read in your policy and I guess staff is here to answer any questions you may have regarding these proposed changes. And if you're comfortable, we'd ask you to consider approving that fee schedule and that resolution tonight.
I just have one question. On page thirteen of twenty-three, I noticed that, and this was brought up to my attention from a citizen.
Sure.
We used to rent the depot for, what was seventy-five, now it's eighty dollars for four hours. And that's very reasonable. But people are wondering why we are renting the pavilion when most of them aren't using electricity. What they're doing is they put, they might have bean bags toss out there or something. They're not using the lights, they're not using anything but putting their stuff there. So is that increase for that? I mean, that wasn't, everybody has been using that pavilion when they rent the depot because there's a lot of functions and birthday parties up there. You see people out there with their bean bags set up out there or the kids are, they got chairs that they set out out there and sit under the canopy so that they're out of the sun. So is that what they're paying for?
Yes.
And not the electricity, right?
Yes, it's, it's a lot, it'd be anything that's associated with that.
Separate entities, right?
Yes. Yes, because you can come and just rent the depot without renting, we rent out the depot all the time, just that billing for like birthday parties and whatnot, and they're not necessarily renting out the pavilion.
Okay.
But you can also rent out the pavilion as well.
So if they're going to be using that pavilion for anything, they have to rent that also?
Yes.
All right. So if they don't want to sit under the pavilion and they want to have their bean toss on the gravel part there, do they have to rent that too? Or is that okay?
I suppose that would probably fall under, Lynn's not here unfortunately, to answer. I mean.
I'm just questioning because people are asking.
Yeah, and I, and I will say this, it's one of our most used.
Oh, I know that.
Used that. Yeah, I, yeah, if you want, would like to wait, I can ask that, Lynn would know more on the use of, of that facility. I guess if they're out in the, the parking lot doing a bean bag toss, no, we don't charge for, we don't rent out parking lot space to, to, to individuals, so, yeah, so we wouldn't be charging for that. If there's a desire not to charge for the pavilion, I guess that's, that's a question for the council to discuss.
I'm guessing people think if they're renting the, the pavilion's in.
Yeah, it's not.
Right.
Right. And most people, and it's not like they're using the electricity or anything, they're just using that space. Because if you rent the depot, most of the time, well, unless you're having like a small group of people in there, if you're having a larger group and it's nice weather, most people put their food inside the depot.
Same, you can, you can say the same thing for all of our shelters that we rent.
Right.
That we charge for.
And I understand that.
Yeah.
But maybe if, I don't know, maybe we should look at, maybe you raise the price of it and let them sit their chairs under there, have it included.
People in the pavilion be one rental.
Right. That might, that might go better.
Turn into one rental.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
There should be separate rates, too, though.
Yeah, because we have people who just want to use that meeting space in the depot. Yeah, I mean, if there's a desire at a table to have the, that question answered, Lynn will be, I can have Lynn at the next council meeting to.
I think we should at least have that question answered by Lynn or.
True. That's, that's, because that's part of the reason that we put this in front of you tonight, so.
Well, what's the question? I mean, people, if they want to use it, they just rent it.
Well, up until last year, I think, is when it really changed, right? Because I was at a function that was there and someone said, well, we can't go over there because we have to pay for that now, when they thought it was all included. They didn't know it until then.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if that's changed or if that's always been the case and if we just simply put it to policy because maybe that question was coming up from.
Right.
Time to time, and, yeah.
Because I've been to many functions there and they've only paid X amount of dollars and they've not, they used the depot and they used the canopy.
Yeah, unfortunately, without having that question raised before tonight, I don't have an answer for you. So I could, like I said, for our next meeting, if that's a concern, like I said, you could either.
And if that's how it is, then who's going to be monitoring that? Because people are going to rent the depot and if they, if they want to sit in the shade, they're going to put their chairs up there, sit in the shade.
It'll just be like a park shelter or.
I mean, yeah, we, we rent out the park shelter and we don't rent out the stage and people still, I'm sure, walk over and.
Use it.
Use the stage. I mean, it, it's, we could hire a couple more staff, right? To monitor, I mean, those, that's the give and take that we have when it, with our staffing and there is a little bit of, of an honor system that you put in to play with some of this.
Well, I would say there'd just be a risk if you want to use that space and don't want to rent it and then somebody else rents it, then you have a lot of people there and that's what it is.
I don't know, other than the farmer's market, I've never seen anybody renting that space unless they're at the depot and have a function.
Yeah, and Lynn would be able to answer that question better than I would.
Wonder how many times that, there's two functions there, you know, and that's where you're looking, you know, to, you know, like, let me say, rent a pavilion, but I think it states that you have to, you know, rent, if you gotta rent the pavilion, you gotta rent the depot too.
Right.
That's it, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to table it, so.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to table it. Any other discussion?
Any other questions, I guess, regarding any of the fees, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried.
That's a good question.
All right, setting organizational meeting for January third, two thousand and three.
Mayor Council, obviously with an election in November, our city charter notes that I think it's either the first Monday or the first business day of the year, you're required to have your organizational meeting. That first business day will be Tuesday, January third. So this is a meeting where you, you will swear in the newly-elected officials and then we'll also set our committee appointments, maybe you just set our meeting schedule, appoint newspaper banks, kind of all of our other organizational things. And so we're looking to do that on January third, Tuesday, January third. Usually we do it right away in the morning, I think anywhere from eight-thirty to nine o'clock. I know I did talk with Tim, he's available anytime that day, and so I'd ask the council to consider, I guess, setting the time to have that organizational meeting.
Mary says she don't care.
No, I said.
She can schedule it for five in the morning and.
That trip was terrible.
I said, I will set that. Approve the setting of that meeting on January.
Looking back in twenty twenty-one, I think we met at eight-thirty, so it doesn't really matter to.
I love nine o'clock.
Pretty much the same all the way across, nine o'clock, isn't it?
Nine o'clock? Yep.
Motion to set for an organizational meeting, January third.
That work for you, Tim?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
No, you can't.
No, you can't. Set the meeting for nine o'clock on January third, two thousand and twenty-three. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All righty, we have sustainability advisory board minutes from June twenty of two thousand and twenty-two and economic development authority board minutes from October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. All righty, Kelly, you got anything for us tonight?
Just to head up, I'll be bringing the two thousand and twenty-three compensation plan to the next meeting and awareness that the city pay equity plan is due again in January. It's every two years, so that's it.
All righty, see, I didn't forget about you tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah. Justin, you got anything?
Nothing that matters, John, I didn't talk about.
No, John?
No, sir.
Andy?
Nothing for me.
All righty. Mr. Saboro?
Nothing else tonight.
All righty. Dave, let's start with you.
Hey, let's do that.
Okay.
No, I don't have anything. I think weather, the way it's coming in, why everybody be conscious of what's going on the roads and watch out for pedestrians and that type of thing, but I got my fingers crossed, we don't get anything.
Okay. And if we do, we can call you, it's your fault, right?
Call Mary.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dave. Pat?
Welcome.
Chad?
Welcome.
All righty, Mary?
Well, we're not going to be in the chamber before the holiday, before Christmas, so I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and have a great time with your families, enjoy the season, because that's what it's all about. Think about those that are not able to be with us this season, the ones that have left us, that are gone. Also, say a little prayer for all those service men and women who are in our country and who are serving us and they're not going to be with their families, so enjoy the season. It's my last Christmas on.
Well said, Mary. All righty. Yeah.
Couple things. We have unit negotiations Monday morning, nine-thirty for, I know, Mary can't make it, but Gary, if you're around. As Mary noted, city offices will be closed on the twenty-sixth, which is the Monday before our next council meeting. That's our, the city's observance of the Christmas holiday. And then I did send an email out for just elected officials training, if any of you are interested in attending one of those sessions that'll be held in January and, and February. I know Tim did get back to me, he's planning on going to one in Mankato, so if anyone else is interested, just kind of let me know, we'll get you guys signed up here probably the, right after the first of, the first of the year. That's it for me.
All righty. Oh, I just want to bring up with January that a lot of people out shopping, be aware of pedestrians in the parking lots, they know that our, all of our box stores are really busy and kids are excited, so make sure you watch out for them running, running through the parking lot. And mark crosswalks on, like on Second or. And mark crosswalks on, like on Second or by the post office and by Citizens Bank. That's state law, right, that if somebody's in the crosswalk, you are supposed to yield?
Yep, you have to stop until they are fully across the street.
Okay, all right. I was told to bring that up, so I did my duty to bring it up.
In fact, it's a misdemeanor crime, so it's the same as a DWI or assault or whatever it's.
Okay, all right, so just be aware of that, the people that are out driving. The other thing, Matt, you did bring up that, I know the sales tax gonna, half cent sales tax gonna sunset in 2026, correct?
Correct.
So should we get the ball rolling on that now?
That, I will say, that will be a discussion item likely for the new council in 2023. We'll start those conversations because it is a process. Couple things, John actually brought this up to me, and it's something we're gonna be discussing. I think we should have an invitation to our local legislators to come and meet with us. We've got, we've got funding that we're looking for in the HAZ facility. We're in the middle of current funding for Lake River Basin Study. We have to get approval from the legislature to do sales tax. And we probably need to start doing that, starting that process probably 2024. But along with that, if we just, if we're gonna make a decision to move forward with the local sales tax, we also have to identify projects. So I think there's gonna have to be some background done, if it's a desire of us to at least explore that option again. And so I think, you know, one of the things we'll probably be looking to do with the council, whether it's the first quarter or the first half of next year, some sort of strategic planning session to talk about some of these things. And so, yes, well, I think we'll start laying the groundwork this year to where we'll probably have to really start, I guess, pushing it in 2024. And I know, I wasn't here last time, Mark, you were, I don't know if you had any other words of wisdom with that process.
So the biggest thing is making sure you're hitting the legislative cycle at the right time, especially if for some reason it doesn't get approved in one legislative session, you have a crack at another one. So that's why it's really vital to be getting started early in 2023, so.
Now, I don't recall with our, our referendum, does that need to take place before we go to legislature? Would that take place after legislature?
I don't recall, I just know that we do have to vote on it, I can't remember the.
Yeah, and so those are some of the steps we have to work through to try to remember what, what those steps would, would be. And so, yes, we need to start on that process, because statutes need some direction. Do we wanna look at renewing it? Because if we don't, it will save a lot of people time and, time and effort, so.
I know, other, other cities have it. So what, what kind of projects have other cities put in for?
It's all over the board. You know, we, we, we shared a little bit of that at the truth, or, I think, when we talked about utility bills. I would say more of the most recent ones have been recreational related. But you have everything, you know, from paying off debts for libraries to water, wastewater. Some people use it for street improvements. I would say all over the board. I think the majority of what I've seen lately has been recreational oriented. But it's not out of the norm for, they use it for, I mean, you know, we start talking about assessments and street projects, there are some cities that use a sales tax to pay for all their road construction projects. And as DeWitt is one of them.
Yeah.
So there's really a wide gamut of things that you can use it for. One of the things that have changed is that you need to be very specific now. So I think in the past, you could say, well, we're gonna use it for recreational projects. Okay, now you have to say what recreational projects, and I think you have up to like five items that you can cover with the sales tax. So let's use recreation, if we decide, well, we're gonna use this for recreation, we have to say, okay, we're gonna use it to expand the, you know, the rec center, senior center, ice arena, camp grounds, whatever. And so those are, like I said, and that's where, and if we're gonna go to the voters, we're gonna have to have details on that. So that's where I think we've identified a need to really start working on that this year because we may have to have some projects or some preliminary reports done on, you know, what we're expecting for costs and all of that.
And then it has to pass the public.
It passed the public, yep, and you have to, yeah.
Choose wisely.
Well, and really, that's a big part of it is inviting community engagement to get ideas, ask what project should be completed, if any, like you said.
Right.
Yeah, because I, I think the process is, there does need to be a local vote because then, you know, I know, we've had, I've talked to cities with frustration without having bonding bills, who they've had community votes, where have approved the sales tax, and now they're in year two waiting for legislative approval to, to move forward with that. Yeah, it's, it's definitely not, we'll do it in six months and be ready to go. So, yeah, we've, we've already started talking from a preliminary standpoint of our need to start looking at it in 2023.
I just remember you talking about that, so I, I think we're all in agreement that we should get the ball rolling, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
And I, I know when you said recreation, Pat, for tough break.
Well, but, but like I said, those are the conversations we need to have. Do we wanna look at renewing it? Because probably the first question needs to be answered. Then secondly, okay, if we are gonna go down that road, what projects are we looking to do that? Use that money for? Because Andy, what are we taking it now on a given year for sales tax? I mean, it's just so the public has a, has understanding as well.
Right, we're looking at 1.9 million this year. So over a 10-year period, you're close to $20 million.
You know, right now, we've used that for, like I said, when it was adopted last time, it was to cover the debt associated with water, wastewater payment, so.
Well, I stirred it up enough.
No, I, except we're gonna have to have that conversation. And I think even some of it of identifying what other communities, you know, when we were looking at recently, was it Womer on their third, or New Ulm's on their third?
Right.
I think Womer's on their second or third, St. Cloud's on their second or third.
Right, and New Ulm is one that Lynn Newman and I would like to go talk to because they've been able to renew their sales tax without letting it sunset for a year. And state statute says you have to let it go for a year and then bring it back up. Well, the problem is then you have all your vendors having to change their POS systems to take the sales tax off, and then only a year later, bring it back on. So would be nice if we can get a gauge from New Ulm, how they went through their renewal process without having to blink everything off for a year.
Yeah, like I said, those are, those are all of those conversations that we have to have as a council.
Let's go home before the, before the roads get icy. Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn.